All right, we call this meeting to order. Like to welcome everybody tonight. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
Yeah.
Becky Duncan.
Here.
Misty Harden.
Here.
Jenny Ledbetter.
Here.
Vanessa Matthews.
Next we have approval of the minutes for the regular scheduled, regular meeting on November 2019.
Can you please read those, Gail?
Be it remembered that the Board of Mayor and Alderman met in regular monthly session Monday, November the 18th, 2019 at 6:00 PM at City Hall in Jamestown when the following proceedings were had and entered of record to wit. Present and presiding, the Honorable Lyndon Baines, Gail Dishman Recorder, and on a roll call by city recorder, the following members of the board were present: Charles Cooper, Becky Duncan, Misty Harden, Jenny Ledbetter, and Vanessa Matthews. Mayor Baines called the meeting to order and welcomed everyone for attending. On a motion by Jenny Ledbetter, seconded by Becky Duncan, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, dispensed of the reading of the minutes and approved October minutes in 2019. Mayor Baines asked if there was anyone with business or grievance for the board, and there was none. Mayor Baines then gave the mayor's report. He spoke about the governor's conference where he received information, informative information about grants that will be available for the city. He then started, stated that the paving schedule is set for March. Mayor stated was working on a grant that pays 100% for red lights. Tom Bennett gave the engineer report. Gary South, building inspector, gave the inspector's report. Bailey Allred, city attorney, gave the attorney's report. On a motion by Jenny Ledbetter, seconded by Vanessa Matthews, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved on second and final reading ordinance 1860 for the agenda. On a motion for, on a motion by Jenny Ledbetter, seconded by Becky Duncan, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved resolution 936 Downtown Facade Grant. On a motion by Jenny Ledbetter, seconded by Misty Harden, the board on a roll call, roll call vote, all four, none against, approved low bidder ABC Weather Station for the Tim Duncan House under the THDA Housing Grant. On a motion by Becky Duncan, seconded by Jenny Ledbetter, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved low bidder Lakeside Builders for Harold and Betty Brown House under the THD Housing Grant. On a motion by Jenny Ledbetter, seconded by Misty Harden, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the low bidder ABC Weather Station for the Joyce Penny Count, Penny Cup House under the THD Housing Grant. On a motion by Jenny Ledbetter, seconded by Becky Duncan, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved new hire Ricky Tench at the sewer plant. On a motion by Vanessa Matthews, seconded by Jenny Ledbetter, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved to remove from the agenda recommendation of new hire for water and sewer crew. On a motion by Becky Duncan, seconded by Jenny Ledbetter, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the bills for October of 2019. On a motion by Vanessa Matthews, seconded by Jenny Ledbetter, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the financial statements for October 2019. On a motion by Jenny Ledbetter, seconded by Misty Harden, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved to have a public hearing before December's meeting to hear from the public about changing the city limit speed, speed to 25 miles per hour and to have discussion approval on December's agenda. On a motion by Jenny Ledbetter, seconded by Vanessa Matthews, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved to add to the agenda employee policy and procedures. On a motion by Jenny Ledbetter, seconded by Vanessa Matthews, the, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved to repeal and replace current policy and procedure with the new changes presented on first reading ordinance 1870. On a motion by Jenny Ledbetter, seconded by Vanessa Matthews, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved to add to the agenda resolution 936 Job Description. On a motion by Jenny Ledbetter, seconded by Misty Harden, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved resolution 936 Accepting Job Descriptions. Mayor Baines then wished everyone a happy Thanksgiving and stated how thankful of Jamestown and its citizens. And its citizens himself and the board was. With no further business, on a motion by Becky Duncan and Misty Harden, the board voted to adjourn.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So I think on the, the motion that was made to hold a public hearing before December's meeting about the speed limit, I think maybe we meant like for this meeting to be open for the public. Am I right?
Yes.
So I don't know if maybe that needs to be reworded because that kind of sounds like we were going to hold like a public meeting before.
Maybe a public discussion.
Yeah.
At December's meeting.
Yeah.
Probably how that needs to.
Yeah. I agree with that.
I disagree with that. I thought we were going to have a public hearing so the public could provide input about the 25 mile per hour speed limit.
That's what we got on the agenda to do that. Discussion and approval and that's when we'll open up the floor for that.
So we don't need to have a specific meeting to address a speed limit change?
No. Not according to the law, it's not. As long as we publicize it in this meeting, in the last meeting would be in this meeting. That's what we, as long as it's publicized.
But we, so the motion, we, we voted and approved to have a public hearing before this meeting to hear from the public. That's what we voted on. And we didn't do it. So we, we might be a little ahead of ourselves.
Did the minutes on the last meeting?
I believe we did.
Yeah.
Right before the meeting. Before the meeting.
Okay. So once and when we do the minutes, we'll just go straight to that. Is that what you want to do?
Tell me again.
You want to go straight to that after this?
Is it a separate hearing? What is this? What, I mean, we, we intended to have a separate hearing.
Yes, it is. He can, it can recess this and then open up the public hearing to see if anybody has what to speak from.
Yeah, I think that's how to handle that.
And then he has to close that one and open this one.
Back it up, back it up.
Okay. That's how we handle that then.
All right. Any more discussion? If not, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Miss Duncan. I have a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Miss Harding. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Misty Harden.
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
All four, none against.
Okay, now I need a motion to reset this, recess this meeting.
I make a motion to recess this council meeting.
Okay. Have a motion made by Miss Ledbetter. Do I have any discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Miss Matthews. Do a roll call on the other side.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Misty Harden.
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
All four, none against.
Okay, we recessed this meeting. Now, we have any, any public discussion about the change in the speed limit on Main Street, 25 miles an hour? That's why I did open to this. Any discussion? Anybody having, yeah, for you?
I would say as, as a business owner in the downtown area, I think we have some phenomenal new businesses that have opened in the downtown area. And I think that anything that we can do to make downtown safer and more walkable would be incredibly beneficial to both the economy of the town and also to, I guess, enjoyable life for our town, to be able to get out and walk around and enjoy our downtown area.
Anybody else?
I'll say, it just as a citizen of the city, and I do walk through the, I park in the public parking, watch some businesses, it, it would be nice for it to be, you know, a little bit slower and everything, so it'd be safer, I think.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. So now recesses, right?
Lance, do you have anything to add to that? Do you?
That would be a key answer.
Okay. Okay. What do you see? I mean, what are you, having a lot of traffic tickets downtown?
I don't know the numbers on that.
What do you find? What do you see a lot of speeding? Do you see the speeding in town?
The afternoons, like school. I think that would be probably the most hard times, I would imagine.
The most dangerous times.
You're in school, but.
I personally have walked from the coffee shop and had to cross the street to get to the public parking, and that is not safe. So I'm for lowering the speed limit and getting a pedestrian crosswalk there. I think we need the light.
Yep.
Also with the traffic that we have with the people on those motorized, I don't know what those things are called, like motorized wheelchairs. Yeah, it's not safe with that. I think we really do need to do this. That's my opinion.
All right, any more discussion? Okay, now recesses, right? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn this part of the meeting.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Miss Harding. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Miss Matthews. So now we, this meeting is adjourned, now we're going to go back to, oh. Pro call. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Now we call this other, back to the regular council meeting, back to the, now, do I have any grievances from citizens besides that? Anybody else got anything? If not, we go to next, just report for the city from the meeting. Like we said, me and Tom Bennett. And, you got anything?
It should be working.
Okay. We got, they're going to approve it, and there's nothing here. Got anything?
Yeah, I'm thinking something up over here.
And there we go. We're approved today, me and Mr. Bennett was there, and to have another meeting on December 16th in Nashville at the Cordell Hall Building at 3:30, and I don't believe we have to go to that one, and it should, everything, I'm thinking about spring, this road should be done, hopefully we get started by then anyway.
What, what is this? What are you doing?
It's a road, a new way to get into Pine Haven to alleviate the traffic that they're having up there, because we've got them backed all the way up to York Institute. And we're putting a new road in, the city and the county's going to work together, but the Board of Education to fix this road where it will, where the old railroad track came in between the football field and Pine Haven, it's going to go in there and come back around and go into the back parking lot and have all the parents pick up, there's going to be one way in, one way out. And it would leave a lot of the traffic on Main Street there. Because we're, and another thing is too, and I was talking to Mr. Bilbrey there, Assistant Principal Pine Haven too, when there's a funeral going on, it's crazy. And if a funeral comes by Pine Haven at 3 o'clock, it's a mess. So, but the city and the county are going to work together on that with the Board of Education. And they give us, the state's going to give us the land for that, and so we'll be, because the land is owned by the state, by York Institute. Trails and Trees is great this year. Had a great turnout, and everybody said it was great. And like I said in the work session, I talked to Congressman John Rose about some things around the city, and he's going to help us as much as he can. So, we're going right along. Okay, now we go to other report, we have the city engineer report. Mr. Bennett.
Just a brief report tonight, as we talked about in the work session, we submitted a request to request an agreement permission last week for $600,000 for improvements at the water plant. We should hear some results on that, hopefully in late spring, early summer. And what that would be is, we would be asked if we're successful with this preliminary application to, to file a full application. Fairly long process if we're favorable in this first phase, but we feel like you have a good shot, you have a good project to submit, and feel like certainly a good opportunity is worth the time to put together the application. So we're hopeful on that, but don't know yet. A couple of projects that we're working on, we haven't talked much about it lately, the 127 highway widening with TDOT, that's, TDOT is doing from the county line, calling up past the 127-62 interchange, that's the first phase, we're actively working with them now. That project's got quite a bit of energy on it, and so we're working with, particularly as it relates to Jamestown and the natural gas relocation plans that will be done at the same time that the road widening is done. And so we're still awaiting TDOT's response to the, Jamestown's request to upsize that, if you guys remember that. So what will be hopefully getting back soon, which we've said for over a year now, would be a contract between TDOT and Jamestown for the improvements. Anyway, we're moving forward with them, with their schedule to get the relocation plans pulled together for that. And I don't quite know when that project's going to let, it's probably going to be sometime next year, latter part of next year, that project should let. That can change at any moment with, with TDOT. And then, of course, we're working on the CDBG Sewer Improvements Project, getting started really on that project. And we'd be looking for probably late spring, early summer letting on that, provided we can get the TDOT permits for the 52 part.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. South, City Building Inspector, report.
Well, I guess what I have to say is kind of ties several of the things that we've done together. David Starnes, our city planner, told me with the mayor and myself, went to a plan. And what we're doing in conjunction with your speed limits, the historical overlay proposal, and some of the other items that, we're kind of trying to put the legislation together kind of in one time. I was trying to get it all in one time. I spoke with the mayor last week, and I told him, I said, I would try to have it for you, but it's an, it's basically, it's almost an impossible task. But I want to graph out the numbers that David gave the planning commission on our road count areas, label them, chart them out where you guys can actually visually see them, because right now it's about 25 or 30 pages of 300 or 400 numbers on them, and that's what you're looking at right now. And to present them to you would be, you know, you'd say, what am I looking at? So I want to try to get those together, and I'm going to do my best to get them in before the next council meeting. But I don't know if I'm going to promise you, because it's a lot of work, but I'll try to get those laid out for you. And maybe by that time, when David meets with the mayor and myself, we can kind of look at, you know, what we have to put together all at one time. Now, that'll kind of, kind of get all of this moving a little bit quicker pace, and kind of inculcate all of the changes that we want to make into one, into one ordinance, okay? As far as the inspections, we sold five, five permits last month, one was for major rehab on apartment complex, three of those were for the houses that were rehabbing through the community grant program, and one is in construction. But so one of the CO on the Joyce Penny Cup, I don't know, 520, High Street, that CO was actually issued today. We should have a CO on Norris Street by the end of next week, I think on Thursday, maybe, no later than Friday. And then we have the one out, so thank y'all for approving those earlier. I made a lot of good happen with those, so congratulations to you.
Thank you, Mr. South. Well, the city attorney's not here yet, he may show up there in a bit, if he does, we'll go back to him. All right, going under old business, approval of ordinance 1870, median policy and procedures, second and final reading. I need a motion to approve.
That's what Freddie has brought. Did he give us that last night? Did he give us that by the motion? No.
No.
So we might have to come back to that?
Yeah. We'll come back to it. Okay, well, move to new business. Approval of resolution 937, Fentress County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mr. Bilbrey, do you like to say anything about that? Go ahead.
Just need approval for the resolution for the, the Hazard Mitigation Plan. It turns in, for us, but we need a revenue from the city of Jamestown, always received one from Allen, Fentress County, and it will be good for five years, the plan, and not only is it for the statute when the, the government declares a state of emergency towards applying the plan, for the statute, not only just for state, but it also for the family.
Any more discussion? If not, can I have a motion, please?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Miss Ledbetter. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Miss Matthews. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
Yeah.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter.
Four.
Misty Harden.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
All right, yeah.
Could she please read that?
Yeah, I'll read the resolution, yes.
Resolution 937, resolution for the City of Jamestown, Tennessee, accepting the Fentress County Hazard Mitigation Plan document. Whereas the Fentress County Hazard Mitigation Plan is intended to provide a strategy for developing actions that help reduce long-term risks to people and property from natural hazard events in Fentress County and City of Jamestown. Whereas the Fentress County Hazard Mitigation Plan has been approved pending formal adoption by the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency and the Federal Emergency Management Agency for meeting, the criteria is stated in 44 CF 201. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Mayor and Alderman of the City of Jamestown accepts and adopts the Fentress County Hazard Mitigation Plan and assigns maintenance coordination to Fentress County Emergency Management, passed and adopted by the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Okay. All right. All four, right? Yep. Okay. Is that good? Miss Matthews. Vanessa, is that good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, now, discussion and approval about the speed limit, the city limit's at 25 miles an hour.
Don't we have to vote on number one?
Do what?
Need to vote, I believe.
Yes. Would you make a motion to either approve or?
No, I'm sorry, don't we need to vote on, on the approval of the resolution? I made the most.
We read it at the end.
We read it at the end, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
That's fine.
Now we need to vote on number two.
Yeah, on number two, a discussion, approval of the speed limit, 25 miles an hour in the city limits. We already had this discussion from the audience, any discussion from the board?
I just want to say, I definitely, you know, I work in the downtown and walk to many of the businesses that are located there in the downtown, the courthouse, and, you know, I think most can agree that as the downtown continues to grow and there's development that we really have to make the downtown a little more accessible for pedestrian foot traffic. So with that being said, I would like to make the motion to lower the speed limit to 25 miles per hour from South Main to Church Street.
Yes. All right, any more discussion? If not, do I have a second?
Do we not need more description of South Main?
South Main Baptist Church.
To.
To Church Street, which is the Methodist church. Yes.
I'll second.
Seconded by Miss Ledbetter. Yes, it's from the South Main Street going to north to Church Street, it's the Methodist church.
And it's my understanding for us to do anything, the downtown area also takes in City Hall to the depot, but with that being a state highway, I think we'll have to contact Mark Linder or TDOT person and find out what we have to do to get it lower.
Right.
Since that's a state highway.
Right. That's it.
That should encompass municipal district.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter.
Uh, four.
Misty Harden.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
All right. Discussion and approval of employees' Christmas bonuses.
Is there anything else in the historical district other than just that main?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know if you all have designated the historical area.
We haven't gotten that.
Okay, yeah, so I don't know about that.
Yeah.
If we need to change it, once we complete with the history, from the planning commission side, then we can amend, but.
I would think so. Yeah, we can.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't mean to inject, I know it's council meeting, I'm not a counselor. What, that's what I was trying to get across, we're looking at overlapping this, this historical district with this, and of course, I know it's going to come back, recommend on the planning commission, that this be incorporated with the rest of it too, but we don't know what that area is yet, but we have a preliminary, and I, I'm not, I, I hope I'm not out of order here, but I think that if you just specify a very short strip only on main road, that's really not going to alleviate the way you want to. I'll know more once I get your traffic counts done.
Right.
But I think that's going to be preliminary and not quite adequate for what you're really wanting to do. That's just my opinion.
Well, what we're looking at too, is we're doing this historical district, we, right now, and we talked about this before, that we're trying to set that district, and once we get the district set, and like Jenny, Miss Ledbetter said, we can come back and, and amend it if we have to, and so that's what we want to do.
Yeah, if it's a matter of an extension with the historical districting, then you just add that in additionally.
Right.
I would think, so.
Yes.
But we'll, we'll know more about this after the meeting.
Yeah, and then when we get to meeting Wednesday.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to have an issue where we're running north and south and it's 25 miles an hour, and east and west it's not?
Well, the problem is.
Inside the city limits?
Well, the problem is we can't do that on 52 because of the state highway. We can do it on our streets. We can set the speed limit on any city street, but as far as the state highway, we can't set the city limits. Like, we can't set the limit, we got 127s in the city limits, but we can't set the state speed limit on 127 out there either. But we can, I can talk to Mr. Linder, or I even have to call Nashville, I will.
I think the, I think this is the first step, though.
Yes.
That the city does that in their downtown, and then they recommend it to the state.
Yes.
And then they see that we've taken the, you know, we're taking the first steps in that, so, in that process.
We're not.
So I think then the next process would be the state, you know, lowering it.
We're not waiting for them, we're doing it ourselves.
Yeah.
So that's what, that's going to move it forward better, looking at DOT, looking at us, it would make, make it look better for us.
Would it not make more sense then for the city, rather than just to have from church to church like we voted on tonight and made it, but all city streets?
Well, city streets are mostly, they're supposed to be, Lance, am I right?
25 miles an hour.
It's 20 miles an hour on any city street that's not marked, or is it 25? 25 on the city street.
It's not marked, 30, 40.
Right, if it's not marked, it's 25, right? Yeah. If it's not marked, it's already 25 anyway. So a lot of the streets are not marked anyway, and so it's 25 no matter what.
So we have, we have with this addressed everything except Highway 52, running east and west, and we will take that up with the state?
Yeah, yeah. All right, moving to number three, discussion and approval of employees' Christmas bonuses. Any discussion more on that?
I make a motion that we approve it, the $50 per year of service.
All right, motion made by Miss Harding. Any more discussion? If not, I need a second, please.
I'll second.
Seconded by Miss Duncan. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter?
Four.
Misty Harden?
Four.
Vanessa Matthews?
Four.
All four.
Uh, number four, approval of the monthly bills from November two thousand nineteen.
No, November bills are in the amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and three dollars and twenty-four cents.
I need a motion to approve. Motion made by Ms. Duncan. Any discussion? If not, I need a second, please.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Harding. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper?
All right.
Becky Duncan?
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter?
Four.
Misty Harden?
Four.
Vanessa Matthews?
Four.
All four.
Number five, approval of the monthly financials for two, November two thousand nineteen.
General Fund, General Fund is three hundred and three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Water and Sewer Fund is one million, two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Natural Gas Fund is one million, four hundred and seven dol, so, four hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-three cents, with a grand total of two million, nine hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Excuse me. Need a motion to approve?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
On the City of Jamestown, the general checking, this, will we go over that next? Or is that, that's in with this?
Yes, this, yeah.
What is the Charles Beardsworth, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars?
It is the housing, the housing grant, it's coming out of the grant.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I need a motion to approve, I need a motion here. I make a motion to approve. Motion made by Mr. Cooper. Any more discussion? If not, I need, I need a second, please.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Matthews. Roll call.
Charles Cooper?
All right.
Becky Duncan?
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter?
Four.
Misty Harden?
Four.
Vanessa Matthews?
Four.
All right, now we move down to aye, any other business properly presented?
No, we need to go back to...
Oh, yes, we need Mr. Alred's report, sorry.
I don't have anything new to report, just, just like...
But we have on the agenda ordinance eighteen seventy.
Just to vote on that again, yeah.
We don't have anything to vote on.
Did you have the, the copy?
I'll give you the new copy, I've got it on my... You guys already have that. You guys voted on it last, last month.
Did you change anything?
I thought we were getting revisions.
I gave it to you last month.
Yeah. I believe we did.
We voted on it last month, so you guys have already...
Yeah.
Revisions?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we went over all the revisions last month.
I think we did, and then I think you were, you were gonna give us copies.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've done what we were gonna do. But, I, well, I went over all the revisions with you guys, 'cause you voted on it then, yeah. So there's not been any changes since your previous...
So she's going to get eighteen seventy to put into the record from you?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
We'll point out the job descriptions then.
You voted on those as well, and I gave those to you then as well.
No, I don't have the paperwork on job descriptions, do you?
For last month?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we tried, I know we made it a resolution.
Yeah, but we literally don't have the resolution. We haven't written it yet.
The job descriptions.
I gave it to you last month.
Yeah, we had, we had resolution on thirty-six last month
Yeah.
for job descriptions.
Do you have last month?
I don't have... Because I asked you what the next number was, we named it that number and voted on it, but we don't literally have the ordinance. Or, or resolutions had to be published yet.
You know, just the job descriptions, they're sealed.
Okay, they were in your folders last month.
The updated ones to...
Yeah, we handed them out last month, on the job.
I know, I mean, I know we got job descriptions, but I, I thought it was incomplete.
I did too.
We made a lot of changes, so...
I thought it was, yeah.
But, so you guys had asked me, last month, you guys had asked me to do those, I, I gave them to you, and then we...
There were some questions.
There were some questions, but you guys voted on them anyway, to go ahead and pass them, so...
Based on?
Based on the way that they were.
What were the revisions?
That's what, we don't have, it's not typed up and given to us.
There, there weren't, you didn't ask me to do any revisions last month.
I thought you said we had revisions to do.
I did, but you guys voted on it anyway, to go ahead and do it as...
They had moved on it before.
So you guys, you guys voted to do it as, as they stood last month. And the record was shut.
Okay.
But, um, but I'm happy to do any revisions you would like.
I don't think we got any documents with the revisions, that's what I'm waiting on, was nothing was printed.
Yeah, 'cause the one, 'cause the ones we have in our binder have all the little notes that you've done on your laptop, they have all your little notes on there, like they're not just a clean...
That's not on the job descriptions.
No, that's on the job descriptions.
That's, that's the other...
Others procedures.
Right.
Yeah.
We had a work session working on the job descriptions. And we didn't get a clean copy back of it with the results of the work session, that's what I'm looking for.
You did, you, you have a, okay, the job descriptions, you have the, the last and final version that I definitely did, per your request, you have those, you, you were giving those last month, and you guys voted on that to approve those.
It says we accepted job descriptions.
Yeah.
That's what it is.
But, but it's a resolution, so it's so easy to change that, okay, that, that's the big purpose, was job descriptions to remember, they're...
I think that's my confusion, is literally, I asked what the next number was, she told me the number, but we don't have the resolution. There's no piece of paper with that resolution written typed out on it. Yeah, we don't have that, that's why I'm like... Somebody was supposed to type a resolution.
Just type up the resolution.
Yeah, we literally don't have it.
That you made changes, or that we added job descriptions, 'cause we didn't have them in there.
I think I would assume the job descriptions would be attached to that resolution, typed up?
Sure, sure, I, I can write a resolution, I thought she was gonna prepare that per your vote last, last time.
Okay.
I didn't have copies of...
No, it's fine, it, it only requires a single vote, a resolution, so, so it, am I making sense, so that's really something...
No, I think we're cleared up now, 'cause we're literally waiting on paper, but we...
It's fine, it's fine, it's fine.
Okay.
So, um, so the job descriptions that you guys vote on, if you wanna keep those, that's fine, if you want to, the job descriptions are very fluid, so if you wanna change that, next meeting, we can change that, or we can talk about it.
But you have the, the notes from the work session on the job descriptions that you can print for us?
Yeah, 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 of course, yeah.
Okay, those, I would think, need to be attached to that resolution, as part and parcel,
Okay.
and then submitted to us, so that, yeah, yeah, so that we actually have the completed product that we worked on.
So...
So now we're back to approval of ordinance eighteen seventy, amending policy and procedures, second and final reading, I make the motion.
I make a motion made by Ms. Ledbetter. And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Not seconded by Ms. Matthews. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper?
All right.
Becky Duncan?
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter?
Four.
Misty Harden?
Four.
Vanessa Matthews?
Four.
Okay.
All four.
Now, see if I forgot anything else, or any other business properly presented? And Ms. Matthews, I would like you to say what you said at the, in the work session.
Yes, I would like to, um, say a big thank you to our police department, um, for all their bravery, they, uh, performed beautifully at the Metta thrift incident that we had, and, um, I said, and just talking to Jacob, I did not realize that his wife was there also, and it sure could have been a different crisis for a lot of us here in Jamestown, so our police officers need to be commended for their bravery and their hard work.
I agree.
Did a good job.
Any other business properly presented? If not, I would like to, uh, wish all the citizens of Jamestown a very Merry Christmas, and, uh, Happy New Year, 'cause we won't be meeting again until after the first of the year. Um, I hope everybody has a, a great Christmas, and, uh, I'd like to wish all my employees a Merry Christmas, 'cause I have some of the best employees there are, and I think they work hard and go well beyond the call of duty, all of you. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Ms. Duncan, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Ledbetter, all in favor say aye?
Aye. Merry Christmas, everybody, Merry Christmas.
Meeting adjourned.